Paul Wilson is from the city of Santa Clara and is part of the coordinating committee membership. Dennis DeCure is our council. Harry Modine is one of our project engineers. Mike McDonald is the general manager. John Kessler is a staff member in the hydroelectric project. Henry Rice represents the city of Lodi on the coordinating committee. And Rich Young represents the city of Palo Alto on the coordinating committee. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just saw two of our directors over and decided I didn't see them before. We have Bob Geistler who serves the San Andres area and Nick Hodgson who serves the Geistler Springs Copper Rapids area. Orders of business. First order is to discuss individual license issues. Fred, please do it.
One of the things we were concerned about, first off, we have received from the general manager.
Could you mind speaking up for us?
If you want to move closer, that'd be good. We'll try.
One of the reasons that we're meeting this morning is that it's been a while since the coordinating committee has met. And your general manager has given us something to look at regarding this proposal here. We haven't had time in the recent past to digest all the information. So maybe we get an opportunity to set some structures to maybe a more formal meeting.
If you want to move right in here, that's fine.
Well, since we have not had an opportunity to digest fully the implication here, and we haven't had a formal meeting with the members of our coordinating committee to attempt to understand what the structure of the offer was, we've got this time to get this coordinating committee together again. Maybe you set some structure to more formal discussions, maybe more in-depth agenda where we have an opportunity to fully understand it and see where we can get together on that.
What type of proposal is it? What's the subject matter? Bob, I couldn't hear you. What type of proposal is it? What's the subject matter? Do you want to place up the public address to show me?
Why did you need to address a proposal because of council meetings?
No, no, I'm just saying, we want to open this up. Well, let's talk about this quickly. Number one, the subject of our proposal is probably going to be a closed session item.
The proposal that they're talking about is the one that I sent to NCK, not PG&E.
I understand. And is that going to be something that is going to be competitive in nature and would not be to our benefit and able to be held within executive session as per Brown?
I think that we can discuss the purpose and general nature of the proposal. It is, I don't think, appropriate or necessary to try and negotiate that. Just far too large a group to really more than privately intend to discuss.
All right, so the question was, what's the nature of the proposal? If that's, if it's okay to talk about that, perhaps we should.
Would you like me to do it?
Sure.
I'll try and speak loudly now so everyone can hear. The purpose of the proposal to NCK was to propose a sharing of the water supply and the cost to acquire the facilities for PG&E, which would result in a joint proposal from NCK and Calaveras to PG&E. We have not had the opportunity to fully explore that yet. And so as of this time, it is anticipated that both entities will file a separate proposal to PG&E. The issue is whether it is appropriate for us to continue some discussions along the offer that Calaveras made to NCK to see if there is some future resolution of the issues between the two agencies. If that will be the case, it may result in a modified proposal to PG&E from the two entities.
I'm not exactly familiar with the entire content of the proposal, but I believe that our agency probably is available to sitting down and talk in specific detail on how we can, if there's agreements that we can come up and agree upon. I believe we're probably, but I think we need to set a formal structure and continue meetings like that within a couple of weeks now. I think we should. Set a meeting that has more formal agenda and maybe an opportunity to then sit down and discuss the high five items.
Fred, what I might suggest on this, when we kind of throw it out, consideration discussion, is that through the committee, both NCK and Calaveras committee members, they assign, as you said, a group or a negotiating team to do this. And that team be given some objectives to meet. If they cannot meet those, it goes back to they're not the match or whatever. They go from that direction. I think another part of this whole picture is in addition to that offer, is I think everyone's aware that Calaveras files litigation. That should be part of the site, is that negotiating.
I understand. I think what I'd like to do is have an opportunity for the two agencies to get absent the coordinating committee members, the general manager, your general manager, your council, our council, any staff members, it seems appropriate because we have on our agenda some closed session items that may be to our advantage to be able to instruct a negotiating team. If we remove the coordinating committee members who may make enough progress at an established meeting now, from being subsequent to that, we may have something possible. And I agree with you. I'd like to propose that what we will do at the commission, I'm sure, which seem like a good thing to do to stress our committee outside and meeting of the electric divisions.
Let me see if I understand. This body here might recommend this be done, you'll take it back to your commission, our committee takes back our board, and move forward and settle.
Yes. Yeah. And I think our agenda is that it will give us an opportunity to put some structure around our negotiation committee. And you and Mike have said the best favorable to you guys working there. An early meeting, I would say, earlier better.
Basically, we're looking to have, I mean, the staff work on, give us a proposal to look at, something that's good to evaluate and discuss between the managers, staff members to know what's going on, bring it back to us, and we can choose on it and come up with a solution to this. Yeah, we're quite different with that.
I'd put something on the table here. There's a little bit of stuff there. PG&E has a deadline of Monday to submit offers. Mr. Holland's sitting over there. Is it possible that we don't?
I'm Mr. Holland. Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay. We have the same.
I don't believe this side of our advantages to adhere to that time schedule. If we mutually agree to notify PG&E if we'd like a delay of 30 days, 45 days, 60 days, whatever, I think that would be, give us time to look at our mutual positions, to see if we can't take the power back, decide on a face. And see if we can work something out. If we can't, then we can simply go forward and submit our individual proposals to PG&E. And I can assure you that CCWD has a proposal to send in. And we believe it's a competitive proposal. And we prefer to see if we can work something out prior to sending that in. If it's agreeable to you, we can do it now.
We can do what number three, yes, to do.
We can agree that we would not submit proposals to PG&E on Monday, and we would sign it together. And we would basically defer it for 30 days, 45, whatever the known amount of days is. And I personally feel like if I tell them what to do, I'm very well done with that. I like making my own decisions. And somebody gives me a deadline that's short, and it's based on a 30-year plan. And I'm supposed to go to the doctor, and we have about 10 and a half weeks to bring it home. And if I can work the students' state and get that exam moved out, and it's agreed upon, it's done, and I believe everybody benefits. I don't like being squeezed by time.
First of all, I think that there's a risk that PG&E wouldn't agree with that. And I think they will take the position that there might be other people proposing. I don't believe that's the case, but any conversations I've had with them, they may quite a point that we'll have to treat all the potential respondents similarly. So that's a risk. I think that even if this group were to come to that conclusion today, we would still need to discuss this with our full commission at the 1:30 meeting, closed session, and see if that's how they want to handle it. I'm concerned though, is we're definitely running out of time. The first is Monday. An alternative to your suggestion, Dick, that I think gets us to the same place, would be that we go ahead and submit proposals and indicate in our, in the draft proposal we have ready to submit, we have stated in there quite clearly, we're entering into negotiations with CCWD. We hope that those will include satisfactorily, and then we can jointly have to go for you. But, and if you said the same thing, this puts them on notice. And furthermore, I would suggest that while we're negotiating, we not individually respond to them and whipsaw. We focus our efforts on negotiating ourselves between us so that we can turn that into a single proposal to PG&E. And if we did that, I'm not sure that it really matters whether we individually put something in on Monday or not. I guess I'm concerned that they would take the position that we missed our deadline, so we don't talk to you anymore, particularly if there's somebody else that's proposing. I don't have any problem with your notion of us going there together. I think that's exactly what we ought to do. A little bit of concern not what proposal they'll take to it.
I think we both have to be careful that we put our proposals in the nature of opening negotiations with PG&E. This is not, here's the roll of the dice, and whatever comes up, comes up. Negotiations stands and take. That allows us the opportunity to bring our two sides together, pull one proposal back, and stick with the other one.
Well, I don't see, I have never been able to analyze and see another possible purchaser out there. And with all the issues on the strain, and I simply don't see anybody else coming in.
I agree.
And I agree that Calaveras County has always been an issue of water. The money, the power are all secondary to us. It's the water. This water's flowed through here for over 100 years. We've always maintained that under a new deal, we can't continue under the old deal. Under the new deal, there always has been some water to be handled to call your bill. But nowhere near the amount that NCPA's application is calling for. I think in the end, why Mark Twain was right, that California whiskey's for drinking and water's for drinking. But I certainly am willing to do it, but I, what we're doing is setting ourselves up to both run a race and try to negotiate while we're running.
Let me clarify something, Dennis. If both organizations submit a proposal and end a proposal, it indicates that we are continuing negotiations outside of proposals, and we do continue negotiations and we reach significant agreement on issues even through litigation. An organization needed one of us that submitted the proposal would have an opportunity then to pull that proposal. I think not submitting a proposal runs a greater risk of PG&E closing the door on both agencies or by both of us agreeing not to submit a proposal. And if they close that door and consider the August 1st timeframe to be the timeframe, then what is at stake is, the only thing left is the application, the meeting application. And I think we've been in that arena enough to say, let's find some grounds for agreement. Let's both submit proposals. Let's both indicate to PG&E that we are negotiating with the other. And if we come to significant agreement here in the near time, then we together can jointly decide to pull an application. It doesn't necessarily mean ours has to be the only one left, yours has to be the only one left.
Well, clarify something for me, Dan. By submitting a proposal, you're not really submitting an offer that may be accepted. You're submitting a proposal with conditions that it may be modified considerably if we come to an agreement. I'm just trying to understand, sir, why do you submit an offer that's in order?
If you look at PG&E's letter, they're not asking for a binding offer. They're asking for a proposal, a little service and basis for negotiations. They make that very clear. And that's what we've submitted to them. So ours is in no way an offer that they can accept and say, okay, send us a check. There are a number of conditions and issues that have to be worked out, and that was anticipated in their letter to us in the first, after you closed in first place.
If you look at the questions they ask, they're reasonably open-ended, and can be responded with, how are you going to pay for it? Well, we'll work out a mutual arrangement to pay for it. That doesn't say, you know, through a division of money and power and stuff like that. So I think there's an, but I believe there's an opportunity to submit an application to PG&E and to answer there for both of us with room in there, with room on the outside, that allows us to then judge which application we would rather remain with.
Well, that's better than going away and saying that we're both going to fight each other all the way. I'm very much for negotiating, if we come up with an agreeable settlement. But I'm just, I've always been a little bit concerned with, and again, you've answered the question, I'm still looking at it easy, is how to submit a proposal that's really not a hard offer.
Well, I think we control our own destiny, both of us, by making an offer within the timeframe. And if we make an offer and in that offer indicate there's going to be adjustments in the process, we commit a timeframe that's established. We meet outside that timeframe and work on agreement of issues. And if we resolve those issues, we decide which application we would rather remain with.
Okay. Classical word theory. Divide and conquer is a preferred method of going against the legion. If you read, if you've ever read a military training, you'll understand that. Tip of the spear divides the bottom. They have us provided right now. I play chess, not for literature, but I play. And what PG&E has done here is they have forced us to each mount an attack, and they sit in the middle behind their embalts inside their portico. And we sit in an army from one side and one from the other, and we're over here doing smoke signals to one another. I'm suggesting to you that we get together and have a barbecue and mass our forces and simply say to them, hey, we're getting to you and we're ready to get to you. And they're saying to you, hey, we have other people that we can deal with. That's, see, for me and Dennis, and for you, looking at the nature of the power production industry today, looking at the issues on this particular project, it seems unlikely to us that there will be another pursuit for this. Now, could we be wrong? Yeah, we could be wrong. We could really be wrong, I guess. Doesn't feel like we're wrong. Based on that, nobody else is asking for a date. We gain more power by joining now, by reestablishing the rules of the game. I haven't liked that. Now, you know, we need you to agree with us if we could do that. Doesn't mean that we're changing the game in time. It means that we're simply saying to them that we're asking you to move your date up from August 1st to something like October 1st. And that gives us now the time to ask. And finally, then I come out and say, hey, we're not going to do it. Why should we do it? They're going to do it anyway. I could be wrong about this. Let's say, I'll tell my strategy out loud, because it's a simple strategy. It seems so clear to me that, I think it's what we should all agree on, and if we don't, I'd be sorry for it, that I openly believe it.
If we could continue your analogy just a bit further, though, and I think maybe it could shed some more realistic light on this. You indicated it's like the Roman legions with divide and conquer. PG&E is a, what, $2.5 billion or $3 billion operation. We're looking at a $5 million piece of business that they have. It certainly seems to me that we stand to lose a lot more if we make the wrong analogy. As far as divide and conquer, they're going to divide and conquer and take all this territory back. You know, PG&E wants to get rid of a little project, okay? And it seems to me that we should be very cautious that we don't get in the way of their attempt to divest this by missing deadlines or anything of this nature. You know, I fail to see the divide and conquer. And then, you know, we've kind of taken an additional step where we've indicated that, look, if we both represent that we are going to unify, that it isn't divide and conquer at all. And we're telling the people who are going to be evaluating these proposals that we're going to be working together. It seems to me that's the best of all possible worlds. We have a deadline, we have gone on record saying that we're going to do this. It seems to me that it's a practical, reasonable way to proceed.
Perhaps we see PG&E differently than you do. They're up in our neck of the woods up here. We don't think of them as a $3.5 billion company. We think of them as our neighbors, and we think of them as somebody that's going to be accountable to us if they do the wrong thing. The guy who's sitting over here is in my Rotary Club. I'm about to have lunch with him in an hour. He's manager for PG&E here. We think of them differently. And perhaps they are different here. But I believe, and if there's anybody here that doesn't believe this, please raise your hand, they're interested in divesting themselves of this project. The only thing that hasn't been established is to whom and for how much. If they play us off against one another, they will drive the price up. If we get together and work out a mutually beneficial and acceptable agreement and say to them, we are together on this, now we can negotiate with you for price and for conditions, that I truly believe that we will get a better price in the long run, and it will cost us less time and energy in the long run. Now, call me a fool, that seems so logical to me, that I hope to overcome the fears that your board has, or that your committee has in regard to PG&E as a monolith that is unworkable. I somehow see them as more workable. And I said, then again, I could be, I could really be naive about this, but I don't think so. But the more we work together, the less leverage PG&E has over us. But you have to have the courage to know that you're going to prevail in the end. Our board has that courage, and we'd like to transfer that to you. And we also have open and honest dealings, that we're going to do it all out in front, and we'll put up our children as hostages if we need to, to make sure that you understand. I'd love for you to take my daughter. And I'll take care of her, okay? All right, but we mean this. We truly mean this.
Well, Dick, there is some considerations here. As you say, I'm worried about acting as a shill for each other.
You guys have got some outstanding rhetoric, Mike. I wish I had taken the rhetoric lessons from you.
We live in small places.
Let me put it in a perspective that maybe just isn't as clinical. I think if we elect to submit simultaneous offers that are comparable, it gains us an option that we won't drop by saying, we're going to be brave and not answer their deadline and pass them extended. I think it's an option that they've offered. I think we can take it. I think it's benign. I don't think it offers us any offer. There's no obligation for that offer to be accepted by anyone of, by their not. I'm saying it continues the line of options, and if we tell them at the time the application somewhere proposes that we are going to continue negotiations with the Calaveras County Water District, and we will be striking a deal, and then we will tell you which application is going to remain with you. That leaves us all the options, and I really don't have a fear of PG&E. We've taken them on.
Certainly, you guys, that's why I'm surprised. That's why I'm surprised that you would be hesitant. You have had good success.
Let me take the scenario another direction, if you will. Let's say that we don't reply, and they say, August 1st is the date. Thank you very much. Goodbye. The applications remain on their merit, then whose application is a better application? We feel the one we've submitted is a very good application, satisfies many of the agencies that are oversight on this project. If that application is substantially better and the rules in favor of it with least quality, least conditions by intervenors, then we're the project holders. We have that opportunity to stay with that. And we could be very brave and say, no thanks to everybody. But what we want to do is sit here and do whatever's in the best interest of both of us as substantially as we can. And I think we can resolve these issues. And I think we'll tell PG&E that in an application. And give us that one more option. And I really don't fear anybody. I'm old enough to know.
You could take that. If everyone is like you, Fred, this would be easy. It would have been done with this a long time ago.
But anyway, I think that's an option that we have right here. And what we can do from here is say that we will charge certain staff members to sit down in the immediate future and to come with the gain resolution of the issues to the degree that we can present it to our combined boards in public and accept it or modify it or whatever like that. I think that's the best course of action we can take right now.
I'm getting no feeling that, and I'd hope, I'd like to get a feeling, that you'd reconsider your application as proposed, because it is the county's position that it takes too much water out of the system.
Well, I think we're talking about, the negotiation with you would involve discussions about what ultimately the project's going to look like. I want to make sure that you understand that we, you know, we're talking about a simple tactic here, is whether it's in our best interest to meet this August 1st deadline. And in no way does that diminish our desire to sit down and work out a settlement with you folks and combine forces and put together a joint approach so that we can go hand in hand to her and to PG&E. We think that we can avoid being whipsawed by just refusing to play that game. And we'd be willing to, I don't think our board would have any trouble stating that, that during the time of negotiating with you, we will not negotiate. We will not get into a shill sort of game with each other and PG&E. But it seems like an unnecessary risk to take to ignore their August 1st deadline just because they might arbitrarily say, but we're not going to accept any proposals now. We think that we can protect our interests, your interests, by meeting that deadline and then continuing to, then sitting down to see if we can hammer something out and not allow PG&E to put us off some other time. I think we get to the same place you're trying to get, but we don't incur the additional risk of giving them the opportunity to say, I'm sorry, the August 1st date came and went, and we don't want to talk to you now. I mean, maybe they wouldn't do that, but our experience has taught us to not take those kind of chances with them.
As a salesman, you've objected four times. As a salesman, you've objected four times, and you need to move on to the next item.
Yeah, I mean, if it's the way it is, it's the way it is. It's certainly my second choice, but it's...
Well, let me suggest this, if I might, that we discuss this with our court this afternoon, and see what their feelings are. But I hope that we leave this with the understanding that if ultimately our group decides that the best way to protect our interests and go forward with you folks is to go ahead and submit a proposal, that that in no way detracts from our ultimate desire, the number one goal, which is to work out a settlement that gets rid of all the outstanding issues, develops a joint approach that everybody's comfortable with.
Mike, if somehow in your closed session day, you do decide to take the tack of not submitting on Monday and joining with us, we've called a special meeting for Monday at 9:00 AM, that our board would be able to modify our approach. So we're prepared to change what we need to change if you should make that decision. So we're ready.
We want to predicate whatever we do on premise that we will establish formal, serious negotiations, absent the elected officials to start with, so that we see how much progress we've made, and then we can follow that up with a coordinating committee meeting soon after a session, so that we can then see where we stand and how much progress we've made. Because I really expect a big progress.
Let me finally voice one, always one of the concern of mine, and it's, I'm not trying to annoy anybody, but in the commission meetings we've had over the last couple of years, we've always gotten very positive results out of it. And then when we came to start negotiating with staff, it always bogged down and never went anywhere.
Just wouldn't be a bad thing.
And so, I'm just saying, I'm, I want to get, I'm looking to get the coordinating committee more involved.
I think we can do that when they've had an opportunity to sit down and look at specific issues, so that we can see where do we need compromise. And I think right now, we're too broad in categories, there are too many segments for us to be able to say that we can reach an agreement on that. Let's let them reach an agreement on some issues and find out where we have some differences, see if we can smooth them out.
Well, I think that Steve and Mike did meet three, four weeks ago or something, and from what I understood, you guys had a real, a fairly good meeting of the minds, and then unfortunately, the weather changed within forty-eight hours or so.
It really wasn't the weather changed, Nick, it was that we simply didn't have the time. You look at the amount of issue, number of issues, as you call it, one thing that we're very firm on is that we want to settle the outstanding losses as part of this. And there are a lot of issues wrapped up in that. And to think that we could get that wrapped up between that date and today, and figure out what to do about PG&E and everything else, it just, we couldn't get there from, couldn't get there from where we started.
I understand.
And your letter to our board, Dennis, seemed to imply that we were not interested in negotiating, and I kind of hope that we're communicating to you that that's not the case. The fact that we didn't resolve things between Steve's letter and now, quite frankly, we looked at that and said to ourselves, there's something that we can work with here, there's a basis for an agreement. We've got to sit down with our board members, our staff from the utilities, explain it to them, see if we can identify the areas that we're concerned about, develop a negotiating approach, and sit back down with you. We just ran out of time. It's as simple as that.
But what I hear you saying is that you believe that there is a track, that certainly the two of you, looking at Steve and Mike, that the two of you certainly knew each other well enough, and could certainly start to work through some of this stuff. And I would just, there's this whole thing we talked about, it's called walk in the talk. I'd like to see you guys do it, and I'd like to see you be directed to do it, and to say to, I would say to Steve, I don't even want to talk to you until you've gotten this done. And I would hope that your commission would leave you alone until you could work something out. We're going to have to approve it. So it's not like you guys are going to be able to make the deal, you just, you'll recommend the deal. But I would hope that maybe go away for a couple of weeks or something with each other, I don't know. But, you know, I was thinking of parole.
I was thinking Tahiti.
But truly so. And I would like to establish as quickly as possible schedule for those meetings, I'm just one of those kind of guys, I prep first, place second. And if we could work that out before we leave the table, I'd be happy, and...
We've gone as far as we can, I think, for now, except for the possibility of setting up another committee meeting.
Listen, we've got our annual meeting in September, you folks come with that meeting. Why don't we set a schedule that would have, we convene this group at our annual meeting, and at that point, we'll either tell you, we'll tell you where we are. We've either got an agreement, we're close to agreement, or here's why we don't have an agreement, here's why we don't think we're going to get one.
Excellent.
We'll either report back.
Gives them plenty of time. And I would, I'd urge you to keep your option open. Give them a piece of paper, put a couple of numbers on it, you know, give them some open-ended answers.
We assure you that we have, we worked late into the night last night, perilously, I might add, that it all came out correctly.
Okay, can we read in that our agencies each have directed their staff to meet and report back at the September annual meeting with significant progress and maybe a solution?
If both staffs feel the need of previous committee meetings, we...
Yeah.
And if we settle in mid-August, we'll call you right away.
All right, so that's, it's good. Anything else we need to...
Let me just kind of reiterate a couple of things that we talked about, whether we're going to do it or not. We did set up by, just a current direction, we set up the negotiating committee with the assignment to do this, and the schedule by September. Second thing was suggested, including the proposal provision, the NCPA and CCDD will be working together towards an agreement, and it may result in possible amendment to the proposal being submitted PJ. And nothing was suggested, it might condition, an additional condition to that proposal, that we would not have any negotiation with PG&E until after this September date. Those things, three things are on the table, at least, one of them we took care of, but the other two were at least for you to consider during your commission meeting. And then, as appropriate, we could amend or take it to our board to amend our proposal.
Awesome. Yeah, that needs to be clarified, that we will not further negotiate on our two offers until after we've made a decision to agree or not to agree.
Can we agree to that? That, with September, what is your meeting?
Twenty-four.
Okay, so we're looking at essentially seven weeks of...
The question may be whether that's the deadline or not, at least asked for consideration. And I think that we have to at least agree, probably by the end of the day, whether that's going to occur or not.
Yeah, I think, just as the question of whether or not we jointly say to PG&E, we're not going to submit a proposal, we need to review this with our commission this afternoon and let me know what their feelings are, but we'll carry this message to them in that recommendation.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address us quickly on any of these items?
Reminder, there will be a meeting this afternoon.
There'll be a meeting this afternoon, and is this on the agenda for your meeting, or...
Close session.
Okay, so you would probably, you would be able to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, if you should so desire.
Our meeting is scheduled for 1:30. At the very first portion of the meeting, after a couple of minutes of business items, the public forum is available for anyone that would want to address any issues.
We'll get our turn now before we're responsible for the rotary fire.
There we go.
We did have a new business item.
Oh, you did? Okay, what's the...
Well, that was just for a new business, somebody might have brought it up. Just open it.
Do you have any business?
I don't really.
All right, and hearing that new business, I'll, we'll have to have a motion, yeah? During this meeting, and we'll see you at 1:30.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, the directly scheduled meeting of the Northern California Power Agency for July 28th. Of course, the agenda this afternoon, I'd like to make a little comment, as we can, there's a number of people in here that can, absent a microphone system, if you have comments or something, you usually speak in a fashion that's clear and understood. Also, on the agenda, after we discuss the minutes, we will have an opportunity for the public to address the agency. We ask at that time if you would make your comments as brief, as clear as possible, and if there are additional speakers that keep the comments, maybe new, and avoid redundancy if at all times. Also, this morning, we met, our Calvares County Water District, some of us met in session for a meeting, to discuss some items, and we've come to some agreement around processes. Further discussion about Calvares County Water District and Northern California Power Agency will be held in closed session, and there is not a public item regarding Calvares County District, and we're not going to be making any decisions at this time in public. Anyway, providing this morning, this afternoon, the first item, it is approval of the minutes of June 23rd.
Hello, Mr.? May I have a question on the resolution? Which page? Is this resolution I need for as well at the end of the minutes? And I believe we passed that as an amendment, and I was concerned, Dennis says it's okay, and I am along for it, but we just made a two- or three-word amendment to a resolution that was approved some time back. I thought it might be important that we know that all we did was amend it rather than adopt it and ask it.
Chairman, as Bill Mayrose called me to work with this, I wasn't able to give myself any information that gave me any confidence that I truly understood the changes that we were making here as discussed in the last meeting. I think it's proper as written, that the resolution is proper as written. In other words, the failure to refer to the previous rendition which created this is not legally effective.
I don't approve of that suggestion.
Motion, allow me to second low-dye conversation, now out.
Page four, I have an eighty-eight, first line, I read the middle, passed, should have been a little bit easier.
Man the motion to move the direction.
I'll go ahead and accept it by a second.
Any other comment? All those who think we approve of the minutes, say aye. Those opposed? Extentions? Thank you. At this time, I'll ask for introductions, is anybody in the agency, who's new to the agency, might want to be introduced? Now, this is Bill.
Yes, I'd like to introduce our fellow representative, Lee, from Long Island. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you a member of our city council, who is also the NCPA commissioner, and this is obviously his first meeting, this is Ken Murray.
Any other introductions? Public forum, any member of the public who desires to address the commission on any item, consider the commission at this meeting before or earn the commission's consideration of that item. She'll also advise the chairman to be given an opportunity to do so. Adam Wickert.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to cut out some of the commission. I do have a handout, so if it pleased the chairman, I can bring the handout to you or...
What are your thoughts on the authority section, right to the guy?
There's a number of them here, so if you want to pass them out, that's fine. I also have some additional ones for the audience. Oh, the agenda that I have passed out, my name is Adam Wickert, and I'm a member of a local organization called 4CPAC as its acronym, and its full name is Calvares County Concerned Citizens for Preserving Angels Creek. I'd like to extend a welcome to the commission, to Calvares County, on behalf of 4CPAC, in particular our president, our various directors, and our general membership. We have been an active participant in this relicensing process for the last two years, and we plan to continue as an active participant until this relicensing project comes to a conclusion. As background for those of you, and there's many of you who did not know me, I was formerly a program manager for a large aerospace company. I worked on, the last program I managed was a 500 million dollar program, and was dealing primarily with satellites and satellite communications. I have dealt with legal staff at various corporations, including my own. I've dealt with contract administrators, subcontract administrators. Hundreds and hundreds of engineers have worked under me, and so I bring some of that past experience to this community and to the project that is before us at the present time. So let's move on to item number two, which is description of 4CPAC and our mission objective. As I mentioned before, we have been actively involved the last two years. We have a membership which is presently approaching 500 individuals. We have, as part of that membership, some twenty business organizations who have joined our membership. We also have four other associations or groups who have joined our membership, including the Murphys Community Club. So putting that in perspective, we have a county population of around 35,000, and the directly affected communities of Murphys and Angels has a population of something like 7,500. So this membership represents approximately 1,400 households, which is about one-fourth to one-third the total number in this general area. And that number includes our extended membership, and the Murphys Community Club, et cetera. What is our mission statement? What are we out after? What are we looking for? Our mission statement is very simple. It reads, "It's to resolve 4CPAC to protect, maintain, and enhance for posterity the historical and aesthetic, as well as agricultural, environmental, and recreational aspects of Angels Creek." That says it all. Moving on to the, to the next item, which is several key issues, assuming organization support at the local, state, and federal levels. At the present time, there are four organizations within Calvares County that endorse 4CPAC. Includes the City of Angels City Council, includes the Calvares County Water District, it includes the Calvares County Board of Supervisors, and it includes the Calvares County Chamber of Commerce. At the state level, we have support for four individuals, two assemblymen and two state senators. At the federal level, we have support for four individuals, three congressmen and one senator. And we are continuing our networking. We are not done. We expect further additions to this impressive list. And I think you can begin to see that probably, not probably, that this is, this is the first time in the history of Calvares County that such a coalition has been formed into one cohesive organization, with one cohesive objective, the preservation of Angels Creek. And I should say Angels, Murphys Creek, because in this locale, it's referred to luckily as Murphys Creek. Also, for your information, I have been approached by other environmental organizational groups who would like to get interested in this process, in this project. To date, I have turned down all such approaches. I think that what we are doing can be totally managed within the resources that we have here locally. I hope I'm not disappointing, but I do have their names and bonuses. I hope I'm not disappointing, but I do have their names and bonuses. Moving on to item number four, I'm trying to stay within a certain timeline here. There are several key issues with NCPA, Unica Angels License Application, now before FERC. It is not my intent to go into detail on all the various salient issues associated with our presence, with your present license application. However, it is my intent to make you, the commission, aware that we do have a number of significant issues, and these issues are on the table, and they will probably be on the table, hopefully not, but when we become interveners in a process before FERC. Suffice to say that we are totally dissatisfied with the application to divert two-thirds of the water from this watershed to the Collierville Powerhouse. Totally dissatisfied. And in the process of doing that diversion, the de-watering of Angels, Murphys Creek. If you continue to persist with that type of conceptual approach, there will surely be a long, lengthy battle and considerable amount of negative publicity both for NCPA, this commission, and the cities that you represent. The listing of the salient issues is on this handout that I gave you. Moving on to the next item. Comments on our financial analysis. Using NCPA's draft license applications and reviewing Section 8, and using NCPA's values for such items as annual average cost of power, annual increase in water flow to the Collierville Powerhouse, the translation of water flow into net increase of annual energy, and my assumption of 3 cents per kilowatt hour. It yields a value of $1,830,000 per year to NCPA and its member cities. This translates into a yearly profit as a percentage of cost on a simple, low-risk project of as large as 66.4 percent. The ROI's and the ROAs are so large in value that they become meaningless. I was shocked by the sheer magnitude of these numbers. Going on to item number six, comments regarding NCPA's response to 4CPAC's motion to intervene on the Angels system. I had a hard time in my mind deciding whether or not to bring this up as an issue at this meeting. In the end, I decided that was probably in the best interest of all to put it on the I think this is really another case or example of community image, which I will speak more of as part of the next topic. However, your legal staff, I believe, has done you an injustice. They prepared a response to our Angels intervention letter which rambles on, sounds contradictory within its own text, and does little else than attempt to raise the hackles of the public. I have not seen the Unica response as yet. However, I believe that such action, it's uncalled for, does not reflect professionally positive on the commission or on NCPA. It seems to be out of touch with the normal standards of corporate America. On the other hand, on the other hand, the response from PG&E is the type of response that you would typically expect. So on one hand, I look at the NCPA response, and on the other hand, I look at the PG&E response, it's like negative. One is totally acceptable, and the other, in my estimation, does you an injustice. The next topic on my agenda is public opinion and NCPA's community. Needless to say, both the public opinion or NCPA's image within a community is at an all-time low. It's difficult for people to understand your motivation. Simply stated, why take away their water? Why reduce these historical flows as they have remembered them over the years? When one tries to explain the production of power and delivery of power to distant cities spread across the state, the typical person on the street will shake his head, or her head, think in terms of breed on the part of outsiders, and is thinking in terms, and is using such words as raping the county of its water. I would only expect this feeling to intensify as time goes on, unless there's a change in philosophy and attitude. And this brings me to my last point, closing remarks. First, I'd like to make a positive commercial statement and a plus for some of the NCPA personnel that I've had the opportunity to meet and to work with. In particular, I'd like to single out Mr. Jim Lynch and Mr. Harry Morgan. And it was also my pleasure to meet with you, Mr. Fred Schneider, in an earlier working session, meeting at the NCPA's Brick Heart Facility in October 1993. In conclusion, I would clearly and unmistakably extend and olive branch to this commission and to NCPA. I truly believe that reasonable people can find a reasonable solution to the present situation. I know that NCPA has incurred sufficient significant cost in pursuing this license application. I know that by the time this case is fully discussed before FERC, and a resolution is filed to such topics as the 1929 Court Order, Electric Consumers Protection Act passed by Congress in October of 1986, and a recent Supreme Court decision in May of 94, a large expenditure of funds will be necessary. I suspect for every dollar spent by 4CPAC, thousands and perhaps tens of thousands of dollars will be spent by other parties to these proceedings. I once told a Japanese customer when we were negotiating a communication satellite that if their present attitude persisted, there would never, ever be a satellite program. Their attitude changed. There was a satellite program that met all the program's objectives. That was a win-win situation for all. I see no reason, absolutely none, wherein there cannot be another win-win situation. There must be developed a scenario whereby all normalized objectives can be met. Remember, there is a saying wherein half a loaf is better than none. It is incumbent on all of the parties to stop the bickering and the nitpicking and get down to the serious business at hand, which is finding a reasonable course and letting all parties have a sense of achieving a win-win. Everyone may not get everything that they desire, but that level of agreement may be the right overall balance that needs to be achieved for this licensing application. You, the commission, and your respective cities surely must have a strong input into the future direction of a license application. I have confidence that your decision and inputs will be a vital factor in bringing together a project will be successful to all parties. I know that this report has negative connotations. I hope that this is a transition time to a more cooperative venture, and that subsequent reports can be positive. If you have any questions now or in the future, please feel free to contact me. On behalf of 4CPAC, thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Senator.
Any questions?
Is there an opportunity for anybody else in the community that wants to address the commission, please? And I ask that we have a whole agenda this afternoon, so we can...
I'll do the best I can. Being a woman is not easy. My name is Elvin O'Brien, my last name is B-R-Y, and my husband is Scotch, I'm not. I want to bring the commission's attention to two different things. Number one is, if you travel to Calveras Big Trees, which is a state park, you will find a stump of one of the larger giant redwoods, which every time, I'm a docile there, and every time I go by it, I think that this is a monument to man's efforts. It was, the Indians and Native Americans lived there for years, and the trees lived and enjoyed life. The minute that a white man found it, it was cut down. He hoped to make money on it, but he did not, which I think was a pretty good situation. Now, the second thing I'd like to mention is also close to us, it is the Federal Park, which is our great, glorious Yosemite. It wasn't too many years ago, it was in the time of John Muir and his walks through the Nevada, that he talked about the hedgehetching. The hedgehetching, he said, we have never been able to see it, of course, was as beautiful and as exquisite as Yosemite, but the powers that be, those who felt that right makes might, were decided that they should, under all circumstances, kill the hedgehetching so that others might have water. Now, I don't know how you feel, but when you go up there and you realize, when you go into Yosemite and you see, say up at the far end, over by Toyota Pass, and you look out and you see the beauty, how anybody could want to get close to a twin to that, I will never understand. Our little, whatever creek name it is, I don't know, I just call it the creek because I happen to like it. Our little creek is a very tiny, tiny part of the beauty of both the big trees and of Yosemite. It is our part of beauty, and as far as I'm concerned, and I'm a member, as far as I know, of Willoughby, I truly believe that we should, as humans, as Americans, preserve every bit of beauty that we can. Thank you.
Dwayne O'Neal, Union Public Utility District, and I would like to reference my remarks to the letter that Congressman Lee from Calveras County Water District has given to the commissioners. It is my concern that the commission understand how strongly people of Calveras County feel about this particular project and its comments regarding the public relations and the feeling in the community. When Unica Mining Company in the 1860s was running the Angels Camp Mine, and they ran out of water, they went to the Stanislaus to supply down there. Carson Hill Gold Mine, which was three miles south of Angels Camp, also was in on the project, and they moved the water that we are currently arguing about due to those mines' produce, the use of their production. As time went on, everybody along those ditches began to use the water and considered it theirs, whether it was or not. In 1941, when the Carson Hill Gold Mine closed, and the Unica Mine closed, the Unica Company said, "Well, since the mines are not running, we're going to shut this water off." And they did so. And I am not concerned with Angels Camp, I, but Carson Hill, my grandfather who lived there, went to the Carson Hill School, and he got the American flag and his rifle, and came up the ditch talking to everybody along the way, and said, "We gotta go turn that water on." And they haven't stopped at Balacito, and you got the guy by the name of Mo Sanders, who's about 65 years old. And Mr. Sanders said, "Well, I don't like you making out walking out, but I'll go with you as far as I can." And by the time we got to diversion point, there was maybe 30 of them, and they jumped in and opened the ditch, earned the water back at Carson Hill. The ditch tender came along, an old guy about 60 years old, and said, "You can't do that, I'm turning that water back on." And nobody wanted to shoot this guy, he couldn't turn the water, right? So Mo Sanders said, "You're not, old 65, I said, "I'm the oldest guy here, and you're not turning that on." The ditch tender said, "The hell I'm not," and started to turn the water. Mo Sanders got the ditch, punched him out, knocked him down, and said, "Get the hell out of the ditch." The water ran. At that point, Calveras Water Use Association, the forerunner of UPUD, started lawsuits against the Unica Company. Twelve years, that lawsuit went on. Nobody tended the ditches, they would have all gone to ruin. A large landowner in UPUD, Tony Rolle, got his brother, Virgil Rolle, to fight the case for UPUD for 12 years without one red stain. While that lawsuit goes on, every spring, it started at Carson Hill, every property owner got up, cleaned their ditch, and moved right onto Murphys. Carson Hill people did it to Balacito, Balacito dug this flat, dug this flat, and diverted. After 12 years of settlement, we're green, and you know that the Emmeros Estate or the Hobart Agreement that took place. I tell you the story, the illustrate how strong people in Calveras County feel about their water, and I will point out to you that Tony Rolle's son still runs his ranch, that Jim Sanders, Mo's grandson, is still owns his property of Balacito, and Virgil Rolle, Mo's grandson's grandson, is UPUD's accountant. I would think that you consider very seriously how much this water means to citizens of Calveras County. Thank you.
Is there any others who want to address the commission?
I'm John Callis, 5490 Bear Creek Road, Loma. I farm extensively in the Loma area, Sacramento area, and here in Berkeley. I also happen to be president of the State Board of Food Agriculture, but I'm speaking today as an individual. From my position, I certainly realize the water wars that have been going on and what are going on in the lower valley right now. Water to this county is absolutely crucial. This county can raise very fine crops. We have vineyards, apples, and have put a very sizable wineyard just a mile out south of here. This county certainly needs their water, and I'm sure that if push comes to shove, they will fight for this water right down to the end. I definitely want to support 4CPAC. I think they're on the right track. I think we ought to be sitting down and negotiating this, but there's one thing that we will not do, is give up our water without one elbow fight.
Is anyone else who wants to address the commission?
Good afternoon, I'm Robert, we're the district in the area of City and here in Angels Camp. I just wanted to come and say a few words to you, I just came from a plant where we're spending almost a million dollars trying to upgrade our facility to treat the water, and I'm sure you folks see your technical advice. You know that if the quality of the quantity of water changes, the quality will change, and the burden of our city will be exaggerated, perhaps beyond our energy means. And I wanted to come and ask you, because I know your council people, your staff people, you're just like us, you may come from bigger cities, but you have constituents, and you're trying to do the right thing, and we're trying to do the right thing too. Elected people I work for may talk a little bit different, look a little different, but they're the same good people. What I'd like to do before you go home tonight, is you go look at Murphys Creek, Murphys Park, and would you drive through Angels, look at our creek, and look at the people that use it, they're just like constituents, the two representatives. And then when you get home tonight, I want you to look into the mirror and ask yourself that if you're fighting for what you're fighting for, would you be victorious over the reflection in the mirror? If the reflection is fighting the battle, it could... If the reflection is fighting the battle, it could or will. Thank you.
My name's Dennis Dooley, I'm on the Calaveras County Water District Order Directors. A couple of very brief comments. I would ask that a letter was sent to all of the member agency commissioners, I'd like to have them look at that. I'd ask that they get more involved in what's happening out here. I have the feeling that they are only very vaguely aware of what the benefits and risks I think that you've heard that there is plenty of controversy about water flows here. I would like to say that we're very interested in the possibility of working with NCPA to come up with an acceptable solution. But when it comes right down to taking too much of the water, it's not going without one heck of a fight, and nothing personal on this, except that we really want to keep our water in the county. And basically, briefly, that's it.
Any questions? I'd like to wrap on this. Anyone else that wish to address the commission, one that maybe hasn't been discussed, it would be redundant. Okay, seeing you want to come forward, I'll remind the audience and the commission, we have a series of committee reports that we're going to be hearing, and then we'll be going into a closed session regarding education on a couple items. We'll come back out of those closed sessions and discuss certain policy issues that are unrelated to the closed sessions. We'll go through a consent calendar, and then we'll begin the meeting. Okay, we'll move on to item three, is the General Manager's monthly status report on this meeting. As I say, is there going to be a departure? We'll take a few minutes break, so everybody get a chance to move about and talk, and then we'll recess and fight those.